Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 regular City Council Meeting of June 12th, 2024. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
Councilmember Cor.
Here.
Thank you. We have an interpreter present for Spanish language interpretation. Would you please come forward and just give instructions to those who might need your services, please?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Stefania, and we have a stud in the back. We'll be offering simultaneous interpretation throughout the event, so if you see or know anyone who needs Spanish interpretation, please let them know that we're standing in the back. Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Stefania, and tenemos a stud al tras de este cuarto. Vamos a proveer de interpretación simultánea durante este evento, así que si conocen a alguien o todavía no han recibido un dispositivo, por favor levantar la mano o vernos hacia el fondo del salón. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. And at this time, Councilmember Cor is going to lead us in the invocation, following the invocation. Priscilla Franco, who is a city fellow in the city manager's office and a senior at Cal State Bakersfield, she's going to lead us in the pledge. She's a business administration major with concentration in finance. She'll be graduating in fall of 2024 and plans to pursue a master's in public administration and work for the City of Bakersfield. So would you all please stand?
Salute. Good.
Go ahead, Councilmember Cor.
Oh, okay. Good evening, everyone. I'm offering a prayer in our Sikh faith tradition, and it's a snippet of our Ardhas, which is recited every day by Sikhs all across the world. And as June is a very significant historical month within our Sikh history, it is my honor to offer this Ardhas today. So I will be reciting it in Punjabi. Ardhas ekonkar vahigruji ki fathay, shri pagotiji sahaye, var shri pagotiji ki pahat shaahi dasmi, pritham pagotiji simar kaya, guru nanak leite aye, fir angad gurte amardas ram dasan hoy sahaye. Arjun har go bindnu, simro shri har rae, shri har krishantay aye, jis dite sab dukh jaye. Teeg bahadr simriye, kar naunid aavet aye, sab thay hoy sahaye. Dasme pahat shaah shri guru gobin singh ji sahib, sab thay hoy sahaye. Dasaa pahat shaah yaan ji di jod, shri guru gran sahib ji te paath di dar da te antarki bolo ji vahai guru. Sikha nu sikhi dan, kes dan, rehht dan, veek dan, vsad dan, perosa dan, dan na sar dan, naam dan, shri amrit sarji ji deshanan. Chongkiya chandey boonge, jugo jugo tal, tarm ka jaikar shri bolo ji vahai guru. Sikha na mani va matu ji mat pata rakhaa, aap vahai guru, hey akal purk apne pant de sada sahaidhatar ji yo. Shri narkana sahib te hor gurdwarayan gurtama de, jina to pant nu vichhodiyaa gaya hai, khulay darshanti dar te seva sambal da dan khalsaa ji nu bhakshyo. Sikha nu sikhi dan, kes dan, rehht dan, veek dan, vsad dan, perosa dan, dan na sar dan, naam dan, shri amrit sarji ji deshanan. Chongkiya chandey boonge, jugo jugo tal, tarm ka jaikar shri bolo ji vahai guru. Sikha na mani va matu ji mat pata rakhaa, aap vahai guru, hey akal purk apne pant de sada sahaidhatar ji yo. Shri narkana sahib te hor gurdwarayan gurtama de, jina to pant nu vichhodiyaa gaya hai, khulay darshanti dar te seva sambal da dan khalsaa ji nu bhakshyo. Hinne maane de maane, taane de taane, utte de or sachchepita vahai guru. Aap ji de, jina jo aap ji da te haasapa yaad kar reyaa June da, guru sahib ji yo, har ek sikha nu chardhi kala bhakshyo, har ek sevadar nu chardhi kala bhakshyo, jede aaj panche hoy ne apni ethe meeting, onna nu chardhi kala bhakshyo. Sach de athe niyay de, athe insaf de khad sakar, athe sikhi asuna naal, athe pyaar naal, athe vand ke shakar di guru sahib ji sanu agyaa bhakshyo. Akhirwada ka temple chukmaaf karne, sarbat ke karaj ras karne se hi pyaar e mel, jina mile ya taara naam che te ave. Nanak naam chardhi kala, tere parne sarbat taakpala. Vahigruji ka khalsaa, vahigruji ki fathay. Thank you.
Priscilla.
Salute. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Thank you, Councilmember Cor. Thank you, Priscilla. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos for safety reasons, and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chamber or in the lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not during other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the City Council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the City Council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance, that conduct that disrupts the meeting may result in your removal from the meeting and/or the chambers being cleared. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, shouting, interrupting staff or presenters during the meeting, speaking out of turn, outbursts from the audience, and surpassing the time limit of two minutes. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Presentations item 4A, a proclamation to Rob Ducao, Board President of the Boys and Girls Clubs of Kern County, declaring the week of June 24, 2024, as National Boys and Girls Clubs Week in Bakersfield.
Well, we are really blessed in our community to have people who really care about our youth. And the Boys and Girls Club in our community employs more than 500 people. They operate at over 51 sites, and they're serving more than 8,000 young people in Kern County. They work to empower our youth, and I've seen that in action. Thank you so much to our Board President, Rob Ducao, and he's going to introduce other members in a while, but it's my honor to be able to present this proclamation. Whereas the young people of Bakersfield are the leaders of today and tomorrow, and many young people need professional youth services to guide them to reach their full potential. And whereas Boys and Girls Clubs in our city help to ensure that our young people are occupied by offering them a safe and supportive refuge, one that provides quality programs, and whereas Boys and Girls Club of Kern County will celebrate National Boys and Girls Club Week along with 5,000 clubs and more than 4 million young people nationwide. Now therefore, I, Karen Go, Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, do hereby proclaim June 24 through June 28 as National Boys and Girls Club Week in our city, and call upon all citizens to join in recognizing the Boys and Girls Clubs of Kern County for providing comprehensive and effective services to the young people in our community. It's my honor to be able to present this today.
Thank you, Mayor. Can I have a couple minutes? Don't say that. Thank you, Mayor Go, City Council members. And my name is Rob Ducao, and you all know me as being the local Public Affairs Manager for Southern California Gas Company. But I also have the pleasure this year of serving as the Chairman of the Board of Directors of the Boys and Girls Clubs of Kern County. And joining me this afternoon is a fellow Board Member, Sharif, and two staff members, Orlando and Gloria. Gloria is a former Board Member, now a staff member at the Boys and Girls Club, and they're just a small portion of those who make this happen. As you've heard me say before, SoCal Gas has a long history of more than 150 years, providing safe, clean, affordable, reliable energy to our customers. And today, we're the largest natural gas utility in the United States, with the goal to be the most innovative, safest, and cleanest, safest, and most innovative energy infrastructure company in America. I tell you that to draw some parallels to the Boys and Girls Club. The Boys and Girls Club is actually older than SoCal Gas. The club traces its roots to Hartford, Connecticut, where in 1860, four women organized the first club, believing that boys who roam the streets should have a positive alternative. With character development as a cornerstone of the experience, the club focused on capturing boys' interests, improving their behavior, and increasing their personal expectations and goals. And this is still reflected today in our club's mission, which is to enable all young people, especially those who need us most, to reach their full potential as productive, caring, responsible citizens. The National Boys Club took hold in 1906, and in 1966, the Boys Club of Bakersfield was formed, and that has grown into today's Boys and Girls Club of Kern County. Today, just as SoCal Gas is the largest natural gas utility in America, this Boys and Girls Club of Kern County is one of the three largest, depending on which metric you use to measure, it's one of the three largest clubs in America. Some metrics may put us at number one, so I like to say that, but top three is safe. Each day during the school year, and you heard some of these statistics from Mayor Go, she was citing citywide statistics, some countywide statistics, we serve more than 8,000 children every day in Kern County at three standalone and 67 school-based sites in Kern County. The club fills the gap between school and home by providing welcoming, positive environments in which kids and teens can have fun, participate in life-changing programs, and build supportive relationships with peers and caring adults. Based on the physical, emotional, cultural, and social needs and interests of girls and boys, the club offers tested, proven, and nationally-recognized programs in five core program areas to engage young people in activities to enable them to develop self-esteem and to reach their full potential. These services are provided through grants, direct payments by parents, and contracts with 11 school districts, the largest being, as you might anticipate, the Bakersfield City School District, which accounts for 42 of those 67 school sites and 5,000 of those 8,000 children we serve each day. This summer, 1,500 kids are attending programs at PCSD school sites, thanks to a contract with the city school district. And that's a new program a year ago, enabling us to reach these children when school is not in session. I know several of you, Mayor Go, several times, Vice Mayor Gonzalez and some others of you have been to the club. I invite you all to visit the club anytime. Contact me or anybody here, or Zane Smith, or anybody at the club, and we'd love to have you tour the club and learn more about it. I want to thank you very much for this recognition tonight. Thank you.
Let's see the photo.
Photo.
Right here. All right, we'll do a couple. Three, two, one. Three. Thank you. This item now is public statements, in keeping with the council's resolution. Public statements are now received at different times depending on the item. I will call on the city clerk to call for public statements at the appropriate time, so please listen carefully for the correct time to speak. If you wish to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and place it in the tray on the counter next to the speaker's podium. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on tonight's agenda or on a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda public statements. If you're here to speak on an item not listed on the meeting agenda, you will be called first to speak. Statements are given a two-minute time limit per speaker, 20 minutes total for all non-agenda item public statements. If you're here to speak on an item listed on the agenda, I will call for you at a later time, so please listen carefully. If public statements become disruptive and I have to clear the chambers to regain order of the meeting, you will be called in one at a time to provide your public statement when your item is called. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we've received eight speaker cards regarding items not listed on tonight's agenda. The first public speaker is Jamie Seeger, followed by Kev, followed by Linda Mull.
Thank you. And just a reminder, if you can all adjust the microphone to your level so we can hear you, please. And because this is being interpreted, we just ask that you speak slowly enough for the interpreter to hear you. Welcome.
Okay, I'll try. Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to speak in a specific term and then maybe broader terms. I think that, obviously, housing and shelter is a right that everybody is entitled to, obviously. But we're being squeezed out of any kind of security because of the greed of property owners, rental property owners, and corporate property owners. The rents are unbelievable, and it's threatening a lot of people where they are just barely holding on to being able to pay basic rent to keep their housing. That's one, okay. But there's a broader problem, and it's the street people, the homeless. I'll let you know what happened to all of those tax revenues, the sales tax that was raised on us. Where did all that money go to hire more police and clean up the streets and ensure the safety and help the homeless? Because over the years, and I think it started in 2018, when they raised the city taxes, and I've only seen that problem grow worse and worse. And we need to house these people in one way or another, not just for their safety, for the safety and the well-being of civilized society. Now, I get assaulted every time I go out anywhere. I'm assaulted, approached by people that, and all of these people are armed in one way or another, you know? And you try to call the police, but I don't see that their ranks have really increased. Where's all the extra police? Where are all these mental health services? I would propose that you stop handcuffing the police, let them do their job, and start to take into custody 51, 50 of these homeless people. Some are drug addicted, some are mentally ill. There's many different reasons why they cannot be controlled, and they're going to stay on the street, but they're in danger.
Thank you, Ms. Seeger. Your time is up.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Seeger, thank you so much for your comments. I'd like to talk to you one-on-one, actually, after this council meeting, so I'll hope to get your phone number, or you can have mine, and maybe we can have a conversation the next day or two. There's a lot of assumptions and some of the things that you said. I just want to share with you some of the things that I know and some of the work that we've been doing at the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Kev.
Welcome. I come here and advocate for a lot of things, but ultimately, I like to make a point on how your refusal to sign a ceasefire resolution now eight months into a genocide reflects the inhumane way you run the city, that you should be funding and competently following through with social programs, environmental protections, sustainable housing developments, and so on, which so many people show up for, instead of overfunding police, which no one has come here in support of despite the many resolutions passed over recent months. With that said, there was an incident in the City Council meeting on May 22 that hasn't left my mind, when an unhoused black woman came here seeking assistance, and that at the end of their comment, as they ran out of time, they pulled out a bag to show you an object. It was at that moment, the officer that typically stands right here reached for his gun. No, he grabbed his gun. So I'll ask you this, seeing as we all go through your security checkpoint, what could she have had that was an actual risk? Nothing. It's the fact that you have an overfunded police force ready to oppress black, brown, and poor people, that you have a killer police force in which the mere idea of a minimal security threat warrants a potentially lethal response. Or can you recall the time that another black person echoed a sentiment during one of my comments, and he was immediately asked to leave? He was escorted out by police? You'll say there is no tolerance here, but that's only for the POC, because there's a lot of tolerance for the white people, especially the ones who target POC, like the Zionist who doesn't get approached by the police officer when he goes overtime, or Christian Gray. We have the videos, Patty. We haven't seen him in a while. Does he also have a stay-away order? This council will turn a cheek away from the racists, the misogynists, the corporate fossil fuel and agricultural eco-terrorists, and the gentrifiers of Bakersfield. Not just that, you encourage them with your policies, your actions, your political suppressions, and above all, your refusal to acknowledge a genocide. Free Palestine, the Congo, Sudan, Haiti, Hawaii, all of them. I can't wait to see this corrupt, oppressive, imperialist system collapse.
Next speaker, please. Just a reminder, there is no applause during this portion of the meeting. Thank you.
Linda Mull, followed by Roman Matera, followed by Carmen.
Well, I promise not to be as aggressive as that. My speech is about, I live in shared housing, which is very, very depressing to me, because I was a nurse for 35 years, and as a result of this, living in this unfortunate place right now, I have had to give up my right to give myself my meds. And I asked the person that is giving me my meds what my meds were for. He said, and I quote, "I don't know." I looked on the bottle, and it said, and I quote, "It's once a day, so I'm giving it to you in the morning." I said, "Oh, my God, once a day?" So I went to my Google, and I said, after I went to Google and I went back to him, and I said, "I'm going to tell you that that drug is a cholesterol-lowering drug, and it's to be given at nighttime." So the next day, I went to my meds. It's in the same tray. I said, "Do you not know that that drug is to be given at night like I told you?"
Ms. Mull, your time is up, but I'm going to ask a staff to get your contact information so we can make a connection to the right person. Thank you for your comments. Are you able to? Anthony right there will help get you connected. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Roman Matera, followed by Carmen, followed by Wendell Wesley.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Hello. I am, there we go, I am Roman Matera. You've seen me at a lot of these meetings, advocating for affordable housing, strong communities, and the kind of action that, and reflecting a lot of the same desire that we're even seeing in some of these other speeches. If there's one constant that I've experienced throughout my, well, really, my entire life, but especially in these past 10 years, it's that I haven't run into a single person who is satisfied with the state of housing. My mother, my brother, my father, my father-in-law, and many, many, many others, including many people who are outside of my family, and many people who I wouldn't even call friends. So I've been talking to a couple of other citizens. We've debated a lot, had a lot of healthy exchange of ideas, I feel. And we've decided to form a new organization that, for the moment, we aren't calling the Bakersfield Urbanists. It's my hope that, given some of your past positive records on your resolutions regarding the, I believe it was 996 acres of land that you had rezoned about a month or two ago, and some of the other positive conversations that we've had in terms of committee meetings and in other, after these particular city council meetings, truth is, I think that we're actually agree on a lot of things. We ultimately strive to build affordable housing, to foster strong communities, so that we don't leave anybody behind. And I would ask that you consider a lot of our ideas, maybe talk to us after the meeting if you're able to. And I would call for any citizens who are interested in seeing these kind of solutions in our city to meet up with me after the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Matera. Next speaker, please.
Wendell Wesley, followed by Ian Journey, followed by Rocky Studer. I apologize, Carmen, followed by Wendell Wesley.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Hello. My name is Carmen. I am here to urge a thorough investigation into Patty Gray's adult son, Christian Gray, the person who was harassing and assaulting people in front of City Hall. If he would have assaulted a City Hall council member, he would have been arrested. And I urge you to look into this violent person, who shouldn't get special treatment because he's Patty Gray's son. This is unacceptable. I'm also here to support the eviction prevention program and urge you all to allocate funds that will help the people in Bakersfield. I'd also like to update you guys on the latest in Palestine. Israel has killed at least 17,000 children in Gaza. And their parents, not just them. Some children have one or none-parent. Some children have two arms, some children have no arms. I urge you to seriously think about a ceasefire resolution. It will be greatly supported throughout this community. Another update, IOF troops were hiding inside an aid convoy and used the humanitarian pier to gain access to Al-Nusraat Refugee Camp to kill 275 Palestinians in two hours and retrieve four Israeli hostages. Both the use of the pier by the IOF and the presence of the US troops.
Carmen, your time is up. Please bring your comments to a close.
Okay. A massacre in a refugee camp does not count as a rescue mission. Glory to our martyrs and free Palestine and all oppressed people in the world.
Next speaker, please. Madam Clerk.
Wendell Wesley, followed by Ian Journey, followed by Rocky Studer.
Hi, my name is Wendell Wesley Jr., and with the new group, Bakersfield Urbanists, we are asking the City Council, City of Bakersfield, to help us acquire two locations for our first project. This is to build affordable housing in the downtown area. One would be the old Greyhound location. It's an abandoned lot at the moment. And the other would be the 24th and Chester, a furniture building that is dilapidated and sitting there. We feel these to be good locations for affordable housing, which we desperately need in Bakersfield, and we will assure you that through a nonprofit, we will truly make these homes affordable to people that would normally, there are normally being saying this is affordable, we're not taking into consideration fixed incomes. We're not taking into consideration someone where their social security was cut short because of a motorcycle accident or an illness, cancer, whatever. We have a lot of things that we need to adjust financially, just for the simple fact, we do a lot of things based on our growth and not the actual income we live on. So we are looking forward to working with city management, city council, in a series of meetings on how to make Bakersfield safer, stronger, and more affordable. Thank you.
Wendell Wesley, followed by Ian Journey, followed by Rocky Studer.
Hi. My name is Wendell Wesley, Jr. And with the new group, Bakersfield Urbanists, we are asking the city council, city of Bakersfield, to help us acquire two locations for our first project. This is to build affordable housing in the downtown area. One would be the old Greyhound location. It's an abandoned lot at the moment. And the other will be the 24th and Chester, the furniture building that is dilapidated and sitting there. We feel these to be good locations for affordable housing, which we desperately need in Bakersfield. And we will assure you that through a nonprofit, we will truly make these homes affordable to people that would normally, they're normally being saying this is affordable. We're not taking into consideration fixed incomes. We're not taking into consideration someone where their social security was cut short because of a motorcycle accident or an illness, cancer, whatever. We have a lot of things that we need to adjust financially, just for the simple fact, we do a lot of things based on our growth and not the actual income we live on. So we are looking forward to working with city management, city council, in a series of meetings on how to make Bakersfield safer, stronger, and more affordable. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Madam Clerk.
Ian Journey.
Welcome. Please raise the mic. Thank you.
Hi. So here today, my name is Ian Journey, on behalf of Team Action Dad. Born and raised in Bakersfield, and I'm here to advocate for bicycle infrastructure, specifically pump track here in Bakersfield. At Team Action Dad, we are dedicated to empowering fathers to become the best versions of themselves, both as individuals and as loving, involved parents. Our mission is to provide a supportive and dynamic community where dads can thrive, grow, and create lasting memories with their children. So as you know, especially through COVID, bicycle popularity has just gone through the roof, received a lot more trail usage, and as I'll show in an upcoming slide, other cities around Southern California that have really bought onto the bicycle park and bicycle infrastructure that is much lacking in our community. I'll take this time to, I think the timing is really nice reading in the paper today about the active transportation plan that the ad hoc committee, I know I've talked to Mr. Smith and Arius about the pump track. So to see kind of the intention of this active transportation plan, I think a pump track really falls in line with creating a safe, active environment where people can learn and thrive in a safe environment. So as we know, I have a nine-year-old and an 11-year-old, and just keeping them off a screen is, it's the hardest thing as a parent. I struggle constantly, and I think any kid you could talk to in Bakersfield will tell you, we just need more things for kids to do. I have an online petition that I started, and here's a few Bakersfield citizen comments that I really want to, for me personally, BMX really kept me out of trouble as an adolescent. I can think of all the things I could have been doing, but I didn't because I wanted to ride my bike. So I'm running out of time here, but I'll go through. So as was presented by your own Parks and Rec Department, we're proposing a location in Beach Park.
Mr. Journey, you're out of time. Can you bring your comments to a close, please?
Yes, so we'll be back. Want to raise some money. We have some outdoor grant opportunities, and so we're working with different organizations to, we'll be back probably in about a year, hopefully with an update on where we're at. So thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Journey, thanks again for being here, and thank you for your Team Action Dads, for all the advocacy work. I know we made a referral regarding this particular topic. I'm assuming it went to committee and then went through the presentation. And so I think at this point, since we're looking at Beach Park, which happens to be in Ward Two, I'd like a meeting with you as well and some of your group members so that we can have a conversation about what exactly you're hoping for at Beach Park and then looking for a strategy to raise those funds. So I think that's the appropriate next step. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Rocky Studer.
Hi. My name is Rocky Studer. I'm here in support of a pump track bike park. I build. I've been born and raised here my whole life on the east side of Bakersfield, so on the east side of Bakersfield in the foothills, I build pump tracks, jumps. At one point, off of college in Fairfax, I had over 100 jumps, multiple pump tracks. I've had competitions. I've had barbecues where we give out free food to any kids. I've had multiple kids from the neighborhood come out with their shovel, their bike. They don't have nothing to do. We bring them in. They learn how to ride. It sticks with them for the rest of their life. My son's here. He's in college. He still rides his bike to class in college. He goes to San Luis Obispo, Cal Poly. My dad's 70 years old. He still rides a bike. When you start riding a bike, it sticks with you for the rest of your life. But back to the kids, like I said, I've had multiple kids over the years come out to my pump tracks, my jumps, learn how to ride, and it changed their life because they didn't have nothing to do, they didn't have no community to just feel connected, feel wanted, feel anything. And it doesn't matter what you guys do. I'll continue to do what I do, and I will continue to build, and I will continue to support kids or anything that has to do with bikes because it's a great thing for anyone. There's just no bad thing, and a pump track would be awesome. I personally know of over 19 pump tracks in California that I've been to. That's not including bike parks that I've been to. There's at least that many number. Like, why is Bakersfield always last?
Thank you. And now, Madam Clerk, was that the final speaker there?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
For that section. Thank you. We'll now move to the public statements listed on the agenda. If you're here to speak on appointments, item six, or items listed under consent calendar, item seven, your time to speak is now. Again, each speaker is given a two-minute time limit, and each agenda item is listed, limited to 20 minutes total. The consent calendar as a whole constitutes one agenda item. If you're here to speak on hearing item 9A, now is not the time to speak. You'll be given an opportunity to speak when the item is called later in the meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed on appointment item six and consent calendar item seven? And let's just wait until we have an opportunity for our guests to go into the lobby, please. All right, go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we have not received any public speaker cards regarding items listed on tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Appointments, item 6A, one appointment to the Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee. Appointment of one alternate member, Ward Six, to complete a term to expire December 2024 to the Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee. One application of appointment was received from Laurel Sheffield.
Thank you. This appointment is by Ward. Therefore, I will call on Councilmember Gray for the Ward Six nomination of the alternate committee member. Councilmember Gray.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everybody. It is my total pleasure to be able to put forth a motion to appoint Laura Sheffield to Keep Bakersfield Beautiful as my alternate for Ward Six. Laurel is a self-employed licensed family therapist with a BA from Cal Poly, a master of science and counseling from Cal State Bakersfield. She has a passion to serve her city and is presently holding two elected positions. Trustee for Rosedale Union High School District and a member of the Republican Central Committee. You're going to be a very busy lady. So I believe that Laurel, you'll be a great addition to Keep Bakersfield Beautiful. You've got a passion for your city and a servant's heart, and that's what it takes because they're going to put you to work. So it's an honor to nominate you. So thank you for being so willing to take on this responsibility, and I nominate Laurel Sheffield for KBB. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe that was a motion, so please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Sheffield, for your willingness to serve. It is a very busy committee, lots of activity, so thank you for your willingness. Next item, please.
Consent calendar, items 7A through 7I for approval. A staff memorandum was provided regarding item 7D8, correcting the property owner name.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Does any member of the council wish to recuse themselves from any item on the agenda? Hearing none, we have a request by Councilmember Freeman to pull three items tonight from the consent calendar for separate consideration. They are 7D5, 7I1, and 7I2. With that, I move to adopt the consent calendar.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Mayor, I apologize. I need to re-activate the vote.
Just tell us when you're ready.
I am ready for the vote, Mayor.
Thank you. Please cast your votes. It seems like we're missing a vote. Who's, who needs to vote still?
Councilmember Weir.
Councilmember Weir, are you having a technology problem? Oh. Go ahead. And can you turn your mic on, please? Speak into the mic, please.
So I've been looking at the things on consent calendar, and there are a lot of items on there that are very, very expensive. And it seems like to me, you know, it's not Christmas, it's the end of June, but the Christmas presents are already there. And so could you just explain a little bit of the major items that we're voting on right now?
City Manager, Assistant City Manager, Helen.
Sure. Yeah, I have no problem doing that, Councilmember. So we've got them kind of grouped together in terms of resolutions. Then we've got our agreements. And so I'll predominantly go through the agreement section because I think that's where a lot of your questions or direction or requests are coming from. So the first two agreements are public safety-related agreements. Actually, the first three are public safety-related agreements. That third one relates to our regional radio system. So that's, it's a very large agreement related to that regional radio system. The next two are related to dispersing some of our ARPA funds, as well as opportunity and EOA, EOA grant. We've got a legal retainer, that next item. The next item below that is a large allocation, again, of ARPA funds related to tourism awards. So we've done an RFP for awarding tourism grants, and so those are ARPA funds to tourism. Let's see, going through the next several agreements are also related to, we've got a ground lease out at the airport, and then the next two are related to security enhancements. Sorry, the next three. Let's see, we've got janitorial service, some major CIPs related to our water, and then the last two are related to infrastructure enhancements, along with some money for our major project on Centennial. Oh, okay. It's a bid rejection, actually.
Okay. So it seems like we're pouring a lot of money into the very last month of our fiscal year. Is it planned that way, or has it just happened that way? Or it's a lot of money?
You are correct. I think that there are a lot of fiscal year deadlines that are, that we're approaching with many of these funds. So I believe that's part of the, why do we have so many on? Because we're approaching the end of the fiscal year. From an accounting standpoint, that's kind of when we close our books. So if it's not encumbered by the end of that fiscal year, you know, there are some of these contracts that relate to making sure it's encumbered by the end of the fiscal year.
Well, you know, I understand you have to encumber things. I get that. But it just seems like we're piling on at this point in time, and we don't really get much explanation for the millions and millions of dollars we're spending right now. And I'm wondering if we can't devise a little bit better system that really tells us what we're buying, because this, to me, is just dollars. But I want to know what those dollars are being spent for. I don't need to know by detail. I don't need to know every little thing, but this is just a tremendous amount of money, and it shocked me when I even just calculated it in my head. It's just, you know, it gave me a headache. So.
I can certainly talk to Mr. Clegg, and we can come up with a summary of some sort that we can work on to provide to council. I think that that's something we can do in terms of like a report out. So I can, when Mr. Clegg returns, I can circle back with him on.
Okay, well, I'd appreciate that, but for right now, I don't. I frankly can't support this.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Weir, not to belabor this point, I'm just trying to clarify what exactly you're asking for. Every item on the agenda has an accompanying administrative report, which in detail outlines the specific rationale as to why we are proposing that particular item. And I'm just trying to understand what your request is and how that is different from the admin reports.
I've been here a long time. I know what the admin reports are. I know what we're doing up here. I'm telling you that this seems like it's out of the ordinary. And to me, if we have that going on here, I think we need maybe a little bit more explanation of what we're doing. And I don't think that's bad. It's probably going to explain more than it is than to just let it set in front of us and bang the gavel. So I want, and I've said this more than one time, that I want really, I want to be able to tell exactly what we're buying. And those descriptions on there, okay, maybe they're good for the people that do this kind of work, but for me, I'm an accountant. I don't know about all this. And I think if we're going to invest in machinery like this at the end of the year, that it may cause for, it may help that we identify what we're doing and keep that in mind as we move along. So.
Thank you. Thank you for answering that. I think maybe one of the other issues that's happening, occurring right now, is that we are also allocating a significant number of one-time federal ARPA dollars, which is atypical for the city. And because of that, there are a number of agreements that are related to ARPA funding. And so we're kind of facing an impending deadline to allocate those dollars. And I think maybe that is contributing to some of this feeling of an anomaly. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you, and I appreciate that. But this is my opinion tonight.
Madam Clerk, have all the votes been cast?
Mayor Go. Motion was approved with Councilmember Weir voting no.
Thank you. And now, Councilmember Freeman with Item 7D5, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't pull this off to challenge it. I pulled it off to see if I could get an explanation from Public Works on... Could you explain to me, and I think the mandate from the legislature, the governor, whoever, that we convert all public vehicles, I guess it's over a 10-year period, into electric vehicles, whether it's a fire engine, police car, everything? And how is that going to be phased in? I mean, just general, a quick explanation, so I can just understand it. And how is that going to affect our capital expenditures, our budgets? Because they certainly cost a lot more than regular equipment. And I'm sure some of it, we don't even know what it'll cost yet because I don't think the technology's there, works for a reliable fire engine yet that is all-electric. So, those make... I just think we all need to be aware if our vehicle fleet is going to be much, much more expensive to purchase, how much that's going to be. And just so we're aware of it, because it means we'll be cutting services to the community to fund that. There is, we don't have a measure LMNOP, we don't have measure P yet. So, there's no revenue increase to cover all these huge increased capital costs that are another kind of, I guess we like to call them, another unfunded mandate from the legislature. So, could you briefly, you know, how much more do these cost? How will we phase them in? You know, what should we expect over, I guess, the 10 years hitting our budgets?
Absolutely. Councilmember Freeman, City Council. In terms of the state's zero-emission vehicle program, it's a very broad program. And it affects different industries. It affects auto manufacturers and auto sales organizations. It affects the city fleet as well. So, the general law is that by 2035, every light-duty truck and vehicle sold will be a zero-emission vehicle, which will probably be an electric type of vehicle. So, the state is moving in that direction. The horizon year is 2035. So, by 2036, every vehicle sold is zero emission. In trying to develop the market for those zero-emission vehicles, the state has required city fleets and county fleets to transition sooner rather than later. And there are two options for the transitional period, the transitional way to go about doing that. One is to go out and start buying the EVs right off the bat. The second option, which is the option the city is using, is to start out slow and purchase 10% of the vehicles that we need over the course of the next couple of years. And for this next year period, that's four vehicles for the city that we're required to purchase that are zero-emission, electric. And start out slow, see the technology develop, continue to work and to research the market so that we're picking and choosing the vehicles we need at the right time down the road. But when we ramp up to purchase additional vehicles, it's going to ramp up pretty quickly. It's going to be a pretty steep ramp as far as the purchase. So, the budget will see an increase. For the four vehicles, over the next few years, we've kind of looked at about 25% increase for the types of vehicles we're proposing to acquire that are EV. So, 25% higher cost than what we would typically purchase with an internal combustion engine. And again, the first couple of years from this point forward is manageable. As we gear up, hopefully, the markets improve and the costs come down as more municipalities purchase these electric vehicles. The other part of that is the charging infrastructure, the infrastructure that's necessary to charge the vehicles. That's the other challenge to this. So, the cost that the city will see in the next few years is manageable. And looking out further than that, we'll have to figure out what those costs are and how they're going to impact the city. But we are focusing in on this, putting a lot of time and effort in trying to understand this complex rule and law and make sure that we're in compliance, number one. We're annually reporting to the state. And we're able to communicate this information to council so that we're prepared in the out-years to purchase those vehicles.
Oh, thank you. I know we don't have any choice in this. I just think, we just need to be aware of it because it means it'll make for a lot of tough choices. Other things will have to get cut. And that's a shame. I guess we'll also have to, our mechanical shops will have to be retooled and people retrained to be able... I know we have a lot of mechanics fixing all our cars. They'll have to be trained in electric cars, too. So... Okay. Well, thank you for that.
Would you like to make a motion on that item? Would you like to make a motion on that item?
Oh, that one? Okay. Yeah, I'd make a motion to approve 75.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmembers Weir and Gray voting no.
Thank you. And Councilmember Freeman, now, Item 7I1.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, this is the design consultant for Anton Giovanni Park Site. I assume this is one of our neighborhood parks. And my question, since we have had a number of discussions on how to cost-engineer our parks because our fees don't cover the cost of the park anymore. We've been delaying for several years. I'm getting nasty letters now, every week, saying, "I don't understand." We've moved in, we've paid our park fees. Why is the city in? And I can't answer. I have no answer because I've been hounding on this for over a year, just for a plan, saying... But, and I have nothing against my own civil engineering, but why are we designing the new park if we don't know how to design it to make it cost less? And we're letting a contract to design the park? It sounds like we're saying, "Well, this one will be just as expensive as all the others" because we haven't done anything. And is it premature to let the contract for the park, if we plan on making changes to make the parks more affordable so we can actually build the park? So, that's my question.
Yeah, Councilmember, I'd like to bring up Rick Anthony just to talk about this specific park and kind of what's being proposed, so...
Mr. Anthony?
Yes. Thank you for the record. Rick Anthony, Director of Recreation and Parks. You are correct that this design is actually happening before we have the completed results of the master plan, which, by the way, is scheduled to come before you as a draft on July, the second council meeting in July. I think it's the 24th or the 26th. But one of the reasons why we decided to at least begin the design is that the school next door, Miller, has completed a parking lot at that particular park. So, we have a little bit of leverage in that we don't have to pay, at least for that aspect. We will go into this design based on some of the recommendations from the master plan. And that is to reduce the cost, reduce the potential upfront for the level of service, the level of amenities, having an opportunity, maybe at a future phase, to add in some of those amenities. So, this park will be designed ongoing as the rest of our parks, trying to make them more affordable, trying to emphasize passive recreation with the opportunities to bring more active recreation online as funding becomes available.
Okay. Thank you. And I understand from our city manager that perhaps by the end of the summer, we'll have a recommendation, an outline of how will we, number one, you know, what's our target anyway to reduce these costs? And then, what's the schedule for funding and building? I think we said we had nine parks that are in a different stage.
They are.
You know, all the homeowners moved into some and are looking at a dirt lot. Others are not as far along. But I just wanted a schedule that's, here's Plan A. This year, we're going to do two of these parks and finish it. The next year, the next two, just drop them in. Because we, I get calls.
Yeah.
And I'm left speechless at this point. I don't want to say something that isn't true, but it's been years now. And we need to have an answer, at least to say, "Hey, in 2026, we're going to build your park." But we can't just say, "We can't answer you." That's just not acceptable.
I literally talked to one of your constituents yesterday and explained to her. That's the one you're talking about. I did explain to her the process. So, the master plan will make recommendations on the criteria for us to begin to prioritize park development. Then, it's up to us to decide how we want to address it.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Freeman?
I just wanted to make a comment.
I don't see any request to speak. City Clerk, is there an issue with... There's nothing on my screen right now.
Well, I just had a quick response to Councilmember Freeman.
Vice Mayor, and then Councilmember Cora. It looks like he punched in.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Cora, this is...
Question?
Yeah, this is, since it's in Ward 7, I just wanted to go and add. One, I wanted to thank Rick and staff at Rexon Park for being so swift and diligent with responding to our constituents. I myself, I know Bruce and I talk about this often, but we probably have inherited a lot of those developments that where the homes are complete, but residents are waiting on the parks. And this area, Anton Giovanni, is one of those same empty lots. And one, I think it's great that we have this extra motivation from Miller Elementary School, who has been encouraging us, has been engaging us in conversation, and has been actively seeking a partnership to develop this park since they've developed that, the parking lot right next door. So, I think this is also sets kind of a good precedent to see where public spaces can be shared with some of our educational institutions locally. So, one, I wanted to thank you all for responding to that call to partner. And if you ever drive by Miller Elementary School, you will see close to 40 to 50 families elderly sitting in any of the grassy areas at Miller Elementary School. They sit at the school because there is no public space available. And it's actually really sad when you see it. It is actually heartbreaking. And I know constituents all over the city are waiting for their parks to be built. This is only one of the many parks that I hear about, like week in and week out. But really, it feels dire. And public spaces are a necessity. Green spaces are a necessity. So, I'm encouraged by the suffer. And I'm really excited to read our park's master plan. I know you're giving us a guide in order to kind of map forward where we're going. But I know that our council will need to also be creative in being able to bring those to fruition. And that's going to take dollars. So, I'm hopeful that, you know, my council colleagues will also, you know, hold our end of the responsibility and bargain when it comes time to fulfill the needs of our constituents in funding those parks that we're still waiting for. So, thank you, Rick. Thank you to your staff. Yeah, excited to see the design go forward.
Before we move on, Councilmember Cora, would you just test the technology? Would you press your request to speak? I want to see if I'm seeing anything there. Okay. It's there now. Yeah, there's quite a bit of delay. Vice Mayor?
Mayor, Mr. Anthony, I just need to check for understanding from my own perspective. So, the way I see this issue is that we have new developments that opened up. People, through the purchase of their home, paid a park development fee. They, through that payment, were somewhat promised a park. The problem for the city is that the accumulation of those park development fees is not enough to actually pay for the construction of the park. Do I get, am I getting it right?
That is correct, with the exception that developers pay those fees for each unit.
Developers pay for it.
Yes.
It ends up turning around.
I'm sure.
The home buyer is actually paying for it. So, now, we have a policy problem. I think all of us on this dies want to see all of these parks built out. But we really have a problem of how we're going to fill that gap between the revenue that's generated through those park development fees and the actual real cost today of actually establishing or building that park.
That's correct.
And so, the master plan, what I'm hoping for, is for us to really observe what is that delta, right? What is that amount for each park and the total of the nine parks? And then, what is our plan of action so that we can systematically go through and actually build out these parks? And then, in turn, go back into the community and, as Councilmember Freeman pointed out, give them an answer.
Yes.
Give them a response.
Yes.
So, is, am I correct?
Yeah, that's exactly what we're telling the communities now. I've gotten tremendous amount of calls from the same community members, probably, that you're hearing from. And it's the same thing that we are developing the master plan. We're developing a strategy. I can tell you early on, it has to be a multi-pronged approach, as we mentioned already, possibly lowering the level of service, but also considering raising the development fees. Things have skyrocketed in terms of what it costs to build a park, as well as the potential to also just start in phases so we won't have to take a large bite in the very beginning.
I appreciate all the innovation. Apologize to interrupt, but I appreciate all the different approaches and the creativity. I think it's required in order for us to meet this challenge. I also like the idea of partnering with the different schools and seeing how we might be able to find some joint-use space that they can activate during the school hours and we can also benefit from for our constituents. Thank you.
Councilmember Freeman, would you like to take action on the item that you pulled? 7I1.
Yes, I move to approve 7I1.
Thank you. You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. And Councilmember Freeman, now, 7I2.
Last one, and it's really a fairly short answer. Does this, this budget, extend the contract? Is this for the 268 beds that are planned? I don't know if they're all built yet or not. We had a discussion maybe six months ago about adding 50 beds. So, I wanted to be, find out, is the 268, does that include the beds we're adding? And does this contract include servicing those? Because I know there was a committee discussion that Mercy thought, "Well, you're pushing too hard." I don't know how that got resolved. So, just to someone say, this does include that expansion of beds? And Mercy's agreed to service them? Is that what we're talking about here?
Mr. Valdez?
Honorable Mayor, City Council Anthony Valdez, Assistant to the City Manager. So, the amount before council tonight includes the 50-bed expansion. So, right now, we opened at 150, expanded by another 118 beds. And so, the budget tonight before the council is authorizing staff to expand by 50 beds, starting July 1st.
Well, this is really to service the 50 beds. We already approved building them. This is, so Mercy's contract has extended and includes those new beds we built.
That's right. So, the 50 beds wouldn't, the expansion wouldn't, the 50-bed expansion wouldn't happen until after July 1st. The expansion doesn't come at a capital cost because Mercy House feels like they can fit another 50 beds in the existing dorms. So, there's not going to be a ton of capital cost. We may need to add some equipment to the kitchens, make a couple other small improvements. But this authorizes staff to move forward with the 50-bed expansion.
So, this contract is to service 268 beds?
268 plus the 50-bed expansion.
Oh, wait. Plus 50 more?
Plus 50.
Okay, that's what I was trying to get.
Yes.
So, 318. We, okay, so we will have a, Runich Lane will have 318 beds eventually. And this contract, at least for the fiscal year, will cover servicing all of them.
That's right.
Thank you. I'm ready to move approval of 7I2.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes. Thank you, Mr. Valdez.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Colleagues, we're going to take one more... Colleagues, we're going to take one more item unless you need a break now. This one, I think, should go relatively fast, and then we'll take a break unless somebody needs a break now. All right, so Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent calendar items 8A through 8D for approval.
Thank you. It's now time for the consent calendar hearings. The purpose of this section is to vote on all of the items listed under consent calendar hearings in one motion without further comment. If anyone would like to speak on any of the hearing items, the item must be removed from this portion of the agenda. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the regular public hearing portion of the meeting. At this time, I'll open consent calendar public hearing items 8A through D. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to request that a hearing item be removed from the consent calendar? If so, please come forward. This isn't the time to take testimony, only to remove the matter from the consent calendar hearings. I don't see any, so does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent calendar hearings? Seeing none, at this time, consent calendar public hearing items 8A through D is now closed. Vice Mayor?
Move to approve consent calendar public hearing items 8A through 8D.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. And now we'll take a break. Can we be back here at 6:38? Ready to start, please. Reconvening, reconvening at 6:38, please. At this time, our next item is public hearings. Each side will be allowed 15 minutes. It's 15 minutes for all speakers per side. So it's important that you identify yourself and make your statement succinctly so others may speak. We'll hear statements from those opposed to staff's recommendation first, then we'll hear from those who would like to speak in favor of the staff's recommendation. If there's testimony on both sides, each side will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal. There's a clock on the TV screens behind me, which indicates 15 minutes. Please step to the microphone and identify yourself. After 14 minutes, a yellow light will come on. At the end of 15 minutes, a red light will flash indicating your time is up. Quickly enter statement. You may ask questions during your statement, but they won't be addressed until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give them to the clerk. She'll provide copies to the council. Please be courteous to others who wish to speak. Madam Clerk, please read the public hearing item.
Public hearing for the fiscal year 2024-25 capital, operating and capital improvements program budgets. A staff memorandum has been provided regarding this item, transmitting correspondence.
Thank you. And tonight, we do not have a staff's presentation, and so at this time, item 9A is open. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Yes, wait, we do not have that. You're going to have to speak, Mr. Hallen.
Sure. Mayor and Council, we have a proposed budget of $869,403,500, which comprises of both operating and capital.
Thank you. And at this, is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? Welcome, please identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Sandra Plastencia, and I am a current policy advocate with Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability. As the city convenes today to decide how to allocate funding for next year's budget, we come here to urge the city to allocate $2 million from the PSVS fund for the eviction prevention program. In previous public budget discussions, the city has stated that housing tends to be their main problem, yet there was a $2 million cut to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. There is also no funding allocated for preventative services such as the eviction prevention program, which the community has been advocating for, for years. We reiterate to the city that, that just as they need to invest in permanent housing, affordable housing, and transitional housing and shelter expansions, they must also stop the inflow of families into homelessness. As Mr. Valdez was quoted in The Californian, "For every six residents housed, 10 more enter the system." The city must be proactive in its investments, meaning you should also invest in preventative measures such as the eviction prevention program. We also remind the city of its obligation to its residents. This is our budget. You are voting on our taxpayer money. Community is asking for an eviction prevention program, and they have been asking for years now. Now is the time to act. We cannot wait another six months to a year for this program to begin. 2,500 families have faced evictions in Kern County within the last year, and they could have used this program. We urge the city to move forward and allocate $2 million from the PSVS fund for the eviction prevention program to ensure families live in safe, healthy, and affordable housing. You have the money, you have the community support, and now bring it home. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Yes, hi, my name is Wendell Wesley, City Management, City Council. There's a lot of money here on this page. You know, I lived in areas where we had theaters, museums, opera theaters, you know? People that love those things will fundraise for those things. There's probably a lot of things in here, as Mr. Rear was pointing out, that maybe we need to slow our roll on, you know, because we're just approving this and approving that while we're watching humans, human lives being tossed out on the street. What was that, six to 10? So we're going backwards. So the homeless population is only continuing to get worse. We're not fixing the problem, we're creating the problem. So we really need affordable housing, and we need it now. And one way is to actually help that until we get these built is by funding this program. We need $2 million, a minimum of $2 million, okay? For right to counsel, for eviction prevention, and eviction protection. Now, I was a landlord once, too. I know there's a lot of landlords that are worried about this, okay? I could have used this problem when I was a landlord back in Tulare County. This program will also be there for landlords that have financial issues that might need an attorney to represent them. We're not going after good landlords. We need good landlords, we need good people. But we don't need bad landlords, okay? This cuts both ways. Well, we want to be the best city here in California. I think we can be the best city here in California. But we need to like really slow our roll a little bit and really work really hard to find the numbers that work right for everybody. And you can't do that with people on the street and increasing those numbers or just creating more shelter beds and spending more money on those separate programs. They're okay, they help, but they're band-aided, they're temporary. So I urge you, please support this program.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members, and city staff. My name is Natalie Santa Maria. I am a promotoria, community leader, and I stand here practicing this procedure of democracy once more and speaking up about or support and our ask for the eviction prevention program. It's hard not to feel frustrated, to be honest, as we have brought up this many, many times, and we're here willingly to work with all of you to come up with solutions, one of them being the eviction prevention program. Yes, it was already allocated some funding. It is not enough. It is not enough to prove its effectiveness. We want to keep putting Band-Aids, that's what I hear and I interpret from the budget that is being proposed by city staff, instead of being proactive. We need to do both, but we need to have more funding to be proactive and to stop these evictions. I invite you all to hear the stories we're hearing in the community. They are heartbreaking. They make me want to be here today and continue to fight and lift up for those voices that simply want the opportunity to have access to legal counsel and also education, to continue to be good citizens and just be part of this community. So again, please allocate the $2 million that we've been asking for for the eviction prevention program. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Santa Maria. Who else would like to speak in opposition? Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council members. My name is Mariela, organizer with Faith in the Valley. Now more than ever, families and individuals need a safe and affordable place to call home. I, along with community members, envision a Bakersfield where everyone is proud to live, free from the fear of being evicted from their homes, have access to legal representation, and be part of a thriving, healthy community. The current allocation of $350,000 for the eviction prevention program, it's not enough to meet the needs of our residents and prevent more families from becoming homeless. Without additional funding, the program's not going to last long enough to have a meaningful impact and puts families at further risk of eviction. As the city works on finalizing the budget, we urge the city of Bakersfield to allocate $2 million from the upcoming 2024-2025 budget towards the eviction prevention program to keep tenants housed and protected. Thank you, and we look forward to working with you to ensure this essential program receives the necessary funding to support our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And would you say your name slowly for our city clerk's record, please?
Mariela Vega.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak in opposition? Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Nadine Escalante. I'm here on behalf of Bakersfield Community Policing and also ACLU Criminal Justice Coalition. I am here with these individuals, asking for the city to please allocate the $2 million necessary. I have worked with community members in these last two years, and the one story that we fail to hear is our children that are homeless. These children are living in cars, these children are going to school in the same clothing, these children are living in the homeless shelter that is not even at a habitable capacity because we're waiting for a new one to be built. $2 million is so small of an amount when I hear 8 million, when I see the budget for law enforcement, $2 million is change. It would make the difference in these kids' lives. You have no idea how heartbreaking it is as a mother to hear these kids' stories of what it's like to be homeless, the long-term effects it has on them. I hope you take into account these children. Please stop looking at just the people on the street, as I heard earlier this evening. Stop looking at our drag addicts on the street, the adults on the street. Please consider our children that are homeless and they need a bed to sleep in. The eviction program would protect these families, the four that I worked with this year that were illegally evicted. By the time they got in touch with me, they're already gone, and their rights were already violated. This is something that makes Bakersfield better, and this is what we need. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Escalante. Who else would like to speak in opposition? Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Jagmeet Singh with the Jhaggar Movement. I'm a community organizer here in Bakersfield, lifelong resident, born at KMC Hospital. I think the eviction protection program represents a unique approach to a problem that has plagued our city for years at this point. When I think of some of the docket items that we've talked about today, parks, bike paths, green spaces for the community, these places are also affected by those who are unhoused and end up in the streets. That's usually where the unhoused folks end up congregating because green spaces are also cool spaces, and we live in a very hot city. I think this $2 million, it seems like a large amount in terms of a portion of the budget. But if we really think about the sort of resources that are spent on removing unhoused folks from these green spaces, these community spaces, I think it represents an investment from the city into our constituents who are the most vulnerable, who work the hardest, often working two jobs to try and make ends meet. And I think it represents, you know, our city council and our city government investing in our people and giving them a chance to stay in their homes and use these green spaces that we're building for them instead of having to live in them. So I would also support the $2 million for the eviction protection program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Singh. And would you just say your first name slowly for the city clerk, please?
Jagmeet, J-A-G-M-E-E-T. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Welcome.
Morning. Hi, I'm Pastor Freddie Lewis Thomas II with Jerusalem Mission Community Church located at South Martin Luther King Boulevard, area code 93307, Ward 1. I'm here to speak on behalf of encouraging to allocating the funds for affordable housing. We, thank you, and we appreciate so much for the schooling and education that has come into the area of Ward 1, including Dr. Martin Luther King Elementary School and the park that has been renovated. But we're also seeing an uptick in homelessness. We're seeing the uptick when it comes to tent cities and people who are unable to afford living in a permanent residence. And we know that this is a problem that's been happening all around the nation, an uptick in homelessness, but Bakersfield has an opportunity to be a staple of addressing that. We have an opportunity to be seen as one who's able to address it effectively. I'm hoping that we're able to encourage permanent solutions and not just the stopgap Band-Aids that we are constantly seeing, but we're able to afford, or we're able to come to solutions for permanent affordable housing for all of the residents and all of the citizens here in Bakersfield City. Also encourage for any of the funding that you have for the allocation of '24 to '25 to increase in the education of Bakersfield. Bakersfield City has been known to be on the lower tier of education, not just in California, but in the nation, and I'm hoping that we will do more to address that. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Thomas. Anyone else like to speak in opposition? Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Emma de la Rosa. I'm the Regional Policy Manager with Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability. I'm providing a comment on behalf of Dominic, who couldn't be here today and lives in the apartment or in an apartment managed by Clemmer &amp; Company. As a resident, born and raised in Bakersfield, homelessness is one of the worst crises in America. I suggest the city take the $2 million ask seriously. Due to the current economic state of the county, this would be a great suggestion. I want to leave off with a quote, "To error is human, but to forgive is divine." I would like to add my additional comment to mention that if Clemmer &amp; Company sounds familiar, that's because they were recently held accountable by the Attorney General's Office for violating the Tenure Protection Act. According to a press release from the AG's office, "An investigation by California Department of Justice found that two individual landlords from Bakersfield, each of whom owned over 100 units, and a property manager, Clemmer &amp; Company, unlawfully issued eviction notices in violation of the TPA. One landlord issued over 40 eviction notices on the basis that the landlord intended to substantially remodel the units, but the remodeling work performed did not meet the standards required under the TPA to justify an eviction. The other landlord issued at least two eviction notices targeting tenants with Section 8 housing, housing choice vouchers on the same basis but performed no remodeling work." These two eviction notices violated the TPA and constituted unlawful discrimination against Section 8 housing choice vouchers recipients. The property manager facilitated many of these unlawful evictions. Separately, the second landlord also unlawfully increased rent for dozens of tenants, including by issuing multiple rent increases within a single year that combined to exceed the TPA's 12-month rent cap and failed to return security deposits within 21 days of move-out and to provide documentation of deductions as required under California security deposit law. That happened here in Bakersfield, and that's happening throughout, right? And Clemmer &amp; Company is probably not the only corporate landlord who's issuing or illegally evicting community. And this is the reason why we need you all, city council members and staff, to support this program so that you can also hold them accountable and so that you can also create change in your community. We were fortunate enough to speak to most of you throughout these last few months, and we all agreed during these conversations that there is a housing crisis issue, and we all agreed that we had to do something about it. Today, you have the opportunity to do something about it, so we do ask that you amend the budget, the '24-'25 budget, to include $2 million for the eviction prevention program. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. De la Rosa. We have a minute and 5 seconds left. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition?
Hi, my name is Veronica Monteroza. It's quick, it's just, I wanted to say that it's cheaper to keep people housed than to house unhoused people, and it's kind of appalling to have so many community members for the last year or over a year. for the last year or over a year coming here and asking you guys for this program, and you guys not taking it seriously and underfunding it. So we ask, as a community member, not representing anyone else, just as a community member, I ask that you guys raise the 2... set aside the $2 million for the eviction protection program. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Monteroza. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Singh None. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in support? Singh None. At this time, I will close the public hearing and return it to council for comment and action. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just want to say thank you to all the advocates for coming out tonight. This is the perfect venue and the perfect opportunity for you all to share, you know, some of the stories and the challenges of what I am starting to believe is really the number-one issue facing residents and tenants across the entire city, really even larger than this, you know, across the state and throughout the rest of the country. A couple of thoughts. I think... I just think it makes common... it's common sense. I totally agree with Pastor Freddie Thomas. We need to look for long-term, sustainable investments and solutions to the homelessness issue, which must include affordable housing, which must include addressing some of the mental health, behavioral health, and substance use challenges. But at the same time, we must also stop the inflow of housing. I think Sandra brings up a good point. For every six individuals that we place into affordable housing, we somehow end up with 10 more on our streets. So the problem is only continuing to get bigger. And while we continue to make investments as a council, while the county continues to do what they can as well to be good partners on this issue, we, time and again, have to sit in the same meeting hearing about the point-in-time count increasing the number of individuals that are currently unsheltered and sheltered in the City of Bakersfield. So something's not working. And I think that $2 million in the grand scheme of things is rather reasonable. And I think keeping families housed is also the humane thing to do. So with that, I just want to, again, commend the advocates. And tonight, I just want to make, not a change to what is currently agendized, but make a referral that when this comes back in two weeks, that in conjunction with this, we also bring back a $2.1 million allocation for homelessness prevention services, including the eviction protection program in addition to rental and utility assistance coming out of the American Rescue Plan Act framework. It's my understanding that ARPA currently has $2.1 million set aside in the disadvantaged neighborhood revitalization bucket. And I think if we're going to be targeted and really be very specific about how we can... how we can best spend our dollars on supporting those families who are having the toughest time in moments of crises, I think that this would be a wonderful opportunity. Before I end my comments, I just want to share that I've been, over the past couple of months, on many different calls. I've had many different conversations about the eviction protection or eviction prevention program, EPP. And there have been some very colorful conversations. And I appreciate some of the challenges that have been put forward towards that program. But what I end up coming back to is that even if tenants do end up having legal protection and legal services provided to them to combat, you know, some landlords who may not be aware of current housing law or, you know, may be aware and are continuing forward to implement that unlawful rent increase or unlawful eviction, my message to you is we are not going after the good landlords. That has never been the issue, and that has never been something that the advocates have been saying. What I end up coming back to is this, and it's that if you are following the law, then you have nothing to fear for. And so as long as you are compliant with the law, then there will not be any issues. But what advocates are telling you today is that there is, although a small percentage, there are those folks out there. And I've even heard recommendations that we should ask the district attorney to prosecute and be more active in prosecuting. We are not the district attorney's supervisor or boss. The district attorney is elected by the people of the county of current, and we do not have authority. What we do have authority over is creating and investing in this program to make sure that we can continue to advocate for the most vulnerable people in our community. So with that, I ask for my colleagues' support as we make this significant investment. And I recognize that this is a one-time opportunity. These are one-time funds through ARPA. And I think that it would be wise of us to make sure that we contract out these services. We don't add these folks to payroll. But it is my hope that we bring back good data to show that this program does help, you know, real people, real families, and make the case that in a year from now, that this program should, in some way, shape, or form, be supported by ongoing funding, including PSBS. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I do want to speak on this. I was going to say something first, but I do appreciate the sincerity of heart in all of you that come. I mean, you come. When I met with you in my office, I was very impressed. You came with respect, like you do to these meetings, and you are sincere in heart. And so I just want to thank you for that, that you're that interested in your city and the residents of this city, that you'll keep coming back. So know that. I do have some questions, but I want to recognize first the professionalism of our staff in putting together this budget and presenting it to us in a way. And today, I was so pleased when I was reading through it and on the computer screen and knowing that the residents of this city, if they can get on there, they can understand what's happening and what we're doing. In past budgets, I didn't feel like it was that user-friendly. So I really want to tell you, great job. I really appreciate that. I also want to thank you for key... to approach our budget this year from a conservative manner because we don't know what our future brings, and I've talked about this before. So I appreciate the fact that you've... you're not trying to hire a bunch more people, and you're not trying to raise, but you're keeping it flat, and you're also adding to our rainy day fund. So I think that's great. I do have some clarifying questions just because I didn't quite understand what this is. So probably Assistant City Manager, Mr. Howland, if you could help me out. Under reliable infrastructure, I see $49 million for complete streets in total, which includes Chester Avenue, H Street, and Dr. Martin Luther King Boulevard. What do you mean exactly by complete streets? I'm not sure what that entails, what we're doing.
Yeah, I can give a general description, but probably Mr. Strackles can give you a little bit more detail. So completing our streets is probably another way to say it. Right now, we have very wide, wide streets. So being able to provide multimodal transportation on those streets, you know, improved pedestrian walkways, improved bicycle, and already we have vehicular transportation going on there. So really, just improving the look and feel as well as the safety and how many different modes of transportation that we have on those streets. Greg, do you have anything else to add?
Okay. I thought that's probably the answer that I was going to get, but I just wanted to make sure of that before I made a statement. And I know there are colleagues on this diocese that are not going to agree with me, and that's okay because I'm speaking for those people that do agree with me. I have had so many people ask me what the heck is going in on in our city that our lanes are being narrowed. I was out on Buena Vista Street just last week, driving that, and I could not believe what I was seeing, that those lanes are so narrowed, and I did not see one bicyclist. And I am... so I am speaking for the people that are not in agreement with this. Not everybody is in agreement with this. So we are spending $49 million on adding... on making our lanes narrower and adding a whole lane practically for bicycles, and the data just doesn't support this. And I'm just... and there's so... I wish the people that are hardworking and opposed to this would come talk to you about it, come talk to us about it, because not everybody is in favor of this. So I'm speaking on their behalf. I'm lending my voice, no matter what anybody else thinks about it up here. I think it's... I think it's something that we need to really be looking carefully at and getting more input because we are going to jam this city up so bad with traffic because of these narrower lanes. It's going to get crazy. The other thing, under economic opportunity for all, I am very pro-Downtown Bakersfield, so I don't want anybody to misunderstand me for this redevelopment fund. But it was twice. One said included continued investment of $1.6 million in downtown redevelopment fund. And then there's just a couple lines down, continued funding of $1.5 million for downtown redevelopment. So what's the difference between those two funds for downtown? Why have we split them out?
Sure, I can speak to that.
Okay.
If I, again, need some help, I'll ask Ms. Jenny Byers to come up with our economic community development. But some of those are for different purposes.
Okay.
So for the downtown redevelopment, some of that is set aside for infrastructure improvement in our downtown, whether it's sewer or other infrastructure improvements that are going on. And then the downtown redevelopment fund is also set aside for some property acquisition. So there are kind of different activities that are going on with those different pots of funds.
Okay. Great. All right, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Cor.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I... just in response to Councilmember Gray, I'd love to chat with the residents who've expressed to you their dismay with some of the road improvements we're making. And I think you should encourage them to attend our multimodal Subcommittee and Traffic Safety Subcommittee. We actually just had a meeting last night, and it was a full house. Every seat in the room was full. So I want to thank my colleagues, Councilmember Arias and Councilmember Smith, on creating such an inviting space within that Subcommittee. It's also at 5:00 PM, so it's after work hours. We've made it accessible thanks to staff. But there, you know, the community and residents and advocates actually outnumber city staff as well as the council folks that are in attendance. But if they attend, they're able to kind of see the purpose and the why behind reducing some of these lane widths. And it takes time to change a habit. I understand that. We're a city of sprawl, and we are car-centric. But what do all these terminologies mean? I get it, they're buzzwords in essence. But we're trying to change habits so that we can reduce the amount of people who are literally dying in our roadways. We share time and time again the amount of pedestrians, the bicyclists, even folks who are in vehicles, even car accidents that are occurring. The amount of car accidents that happen within our city, that is not a normal occurrence, and it should not be just the... it should not be normalized. It should not be the way of life. It should not be the way we've come to become accustomed and the safety, or rather, non-safety we've come to expect. But I hope that we can all agree that even if one life is saved in implementing some of these research-supported, evidence-based practices that we're implementing through our Public Works Department, even saving one life is money well-spent, in my opinion. And I hope that we can all agree. I want to move on to Councilmember Arias's referral that he's made tonight and just join in supporting the referral and just want to amplify that for staff. And I'm encouraged to see what we can come back with and having a kind of an outlined budget where we can draw money from in ARPA. And I want to thank all of the community advocates for coming time and time again, for having the same message, being consistent, being a voice of the community, having a diverse coalition. And someone spoke to a point that I'd like to emphasize is a lot of the times, we're understanding our homeless neighbors, our houseless neighbors as being those who are also in need of medical support. And that's probably the easiest assumption to make. It's the easiest conclusion to draw. But the children, I think someone had mentioned, what about the children? The children who are displaced when, you know, when a family can't make rent? You're having to move school districts. You are losing friends. You are losing a relationship with your teacher. You are losing an entire community at a young age. And the psychological effects of that will last for a lifetime. So this goes beyond... this goes beyond just one occurrence. I mean, it would be, in kind of, in comparison, an adult as myself compared to a child losing their home, losing their community, losing where they call home, that is a much more painful experience. And I want to just give appreciation for that example being shared with us today and that being a perspective that deserves value. Everyone's experience deserves value. But housing and affordable housing is cyclical. It's... you know, in any relationship you have with where you live, you know, you might start in an apartment. You're saving up. You're working towards having more secure housing, maybe dream of buying a home. But I also think for those of us who have the power to implement policy and design policy, we're also placing value on our residents as to, you know, is it a bed that you get? And that's what we're investing in? Or are we investing in making sure you stay in the place that you call home? That the place that is home for you? And for everyone, that looks different. But it's not temporary. It's not a Band-Aid. And I would hope that this is just the first step that we take in also communicating our priorities and understanding the displacement that comes with losing one's home. And so in sharing all of that, I just want to thank Councilmember Arias for being creative and encouraging the referral tonight. And I look forward to a continued conversation. And I know this is just the beginning. I would hope that this is just the beginning. And it's a multi-pronged approach. Many solutions will hopefully, you know, come into aid because it's true, there have been so many different... everyone who shared tonight made all of the valuable points that I would have made too. We all take on the cost burden of our houseless neighbors as well. And so it's also something that we can share in coming to a solution as well. It's why we see the rent prices that we do in the City of Bakersfield. And some might be surprised by them, but if you're a renter, you're not. Like, you know the realities of that. So yeah, thank you. I just... that is all I have on that.
Thank you, Councilmember Cor. Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of comments. First, just a question, Gary. Do we have $350 allocated for the rent prevention... I mean, the eviction prevention program in the budget we're looking at? Is that in there?
Yes.
Because I can't... you know, in the detail, I can't really find it. But okay, so at least we have that in there now. And for some... also some clarification on Councilman Rice. Is there 2.1 million of potential ARPA funds out there which could be used for rental assistance for all sorts of things, as well as this? Is that right? That potentially that could be obtained?
My understanding is yes. They haven't been dedicated to any particular project, and they are available to be able to be allocated for this purpose. to be allocated for this purpose. I did want to clarify that $350,000 is something that's already been previously voted on in the past. It is not a part of this current budget proposal.
Okay, wait a minute.
It's a carryover amount.
But it's still in there.
Right. So it is, it is a carryover.
So there is 350 in the budget right now.
Correct.
Well, and regarding that, if there's 2.1 million, I like to call it free money, I'm never going to object to that. However, I think we have to be careful that we don't make it, if we have this free one-time money, we don't build in an automatic expectation that we can spend 2.1 million every year. We got to do new budget every year. We have to look at, you know, how much money do we have? And so I would just caution, maybe, maybe that's spent on rent subsidies or another that, but, but it isn't all spent on eviction prevention program, because the following year, we may not have the money. Remember, the costs are going up through, many through government mandates, and the revenues are going down. So each year, you're going to have, council's going to have much more painful decisions on where do we cut? It's not going to be extra money to spend on things we like. It's going to be where are we going to cut? Which road that's crumbling are we not going to increase? Are we not going to fix? Which sewer are we not going to fix? Basic things. We've sort of been spoiled with all of this free government money for a few years, and I think it's going to be like a cold shower dealing with budgets, as all the subsidies dry up, where we would get some ARPA funds or this, but all that'll go away. And we're going to be back to the way we were, and it's, it's going to be tight. I just want to remember that before we lead people to expect things that we may not have the money for. I did want to, well, just, let's just, hold on. The extra CalPERS payment, that's above the regular payroll pension payments, 45 million in the budget. It goes up 6 million every year. That's just the extra portion on top of the pension payments we make to payroll. It will someday be 100 million, okay? There's no tax increase, there's no revenue increase for that. It cuts into all the services we can offer, including even paving a road. It's a devastating, I'm not saying we do anything about it, we just have to say, hey, that's the reality we're going to have to deal with. It is real. The electric vehicle manning, that'll probably start at several million extra. We don't get any value for it. The next year, it could be five. The next year, it could be seven. The next year, it'd be 10. These are a new tax. We have this, we still have a tractor that works or a dump truck that works. They didn't need better dump truck. But these are, they eat into, there's no tax increase for these. They eat into all the services we want to provide people for. So we're really going to have to be careful. It's going to be much harder as the years go on, unless we do Measure P on top of Measure N. And I, I don't think, right now, I don't think we could get something like that passed. I did want to ask about the 49 million that Councilman Gray mentioned. Could you clarify, even if, a round number, we have X dollars in here for, you know, repaving streets, the basic things we have to do for our town. You know how much we have budgeted to, you know, fix all the streets? We got to repave a lot of them every year, and we're way behind in your index schedule. You know, we're, we're not in good shape. Our roads are not in good shape. We're behind. But how much, how much are we, did we budget to spend next year? Just a round number, if you know.
Councilmember Freeman, if you give me a moment just to pull it up here. So in the streets and right-of-way improvement category, there's $10 million allocated towards Chester Avenue, and then other complete streets add up to the $46 million.
Okay, wait, wait, you added this complete streets. I'm going to differentiate between spending to repave our streets as they wear out and this thing called complete streets, because I don't know which is which.
Right.
But a minute ago, we were talking about it's only bike lanes and, and parkways and medians enhancements, nice to haves, that we're spending 49 million on. And I didn't get that out of the budget. If we're only spending, it can't be that we're spending 10 million to fix all the roads in Bakersfield and 49 million to put in bike lanes. That, that can't be the case.
No, no, there's an approximately 23 to 25 million additional dollars being invested into street resurfacing, both by public works crews and by contractors that will go out to bid for.
Okay, so about 25 million to fix the streets. Now, what is this 49 million for bike lanes and parkway enhancements? 49 million?
Well, I, I think that's the number tied to complete streets. I, I'm not quite sure.
Complete streets. Okay, is complete street, is that all out of our, you know, general fund or measure N? None of it is in ARPA money?
There's a combination of sources for that funding. Much of it is grant funding. You'll recall for Chester Avenue, we did receive a $10 million grant from the federal government under the RACE category to allocate towards that $15 million project along Chester Avenue. So a good portion of that particular project is funded with federal dollars. There are other projects as well, such as H Street, that is significantly funded by state and federal grant money.
Well, okay, because it's, for me, it's confused. I worry about the money coming out of our pocket. I love the free money when it comes in. I'm not as worried about that. If we can do a boulevard with, with grant money, is it not our money? Great. But could you, could you, you know, send us a note? I mean, before this council, I don't want to have to have a council meeting speech. I just, just send me a memo. Here's how much money we're going to spend on repairing the streets in our budget, the regular stuff. Here's how much in, you know, that, let's say, extra enhancements, you can call them bike lanes, whatever. And of that amount, how much are grants versus coming out of our pocket? Because I can't imagine if we're spending 25 million of our money to fix streets, that we would be spending more than, whatever, 5 million of our own money, maybe 20 million of grants from, you know, from, from grants. I just want to see the ratio of, of our regular money. And there are some enhance, you know, we do need to replace the medians. There are some things that we do need to do from our own funds. But I'm confused, and I just, and I don't want to be confused. I don't know, how much is coming from the government free one-time grants, which of course, we're going to spend and make things nice? And how much is the regular budget? We take right out of either general fund or measure N, so we know that's, that's our money, because that's likely to repeat each year. And the one-time money's, I mean, the state says it's broke, you know, they only want to fund homeless, okay? And this is the latest thing, I'm going to cut back the homeless, because you're not doing a good job cities. So the free money is going to go away, or a lot of it, and we need to understand going forward. You know, is it, we spent about 25 million on roads and parkways and stuff? Fine, how much is that? But, but I think we've been spoiled and, and a little confused in our budgeting because of the massive amount of government subsidies that are one timers that we've been receiving. I know I'm confused. So that's, that's the end of my comment. Thanks.
We, Councilmember, we can develop a list of the sources of funds by, based on some of the larger projects. Because like, like Mr. Struck who said, we have a lot of federal sources, because there's lots of federal grant dollars that we've applied for. We've been successful. MLK is another, 5 million that was a federal source of that project, which is complete streets. So we can, we can provide a breakdown to you.
Yeah, kind of summary, so it's easy to understand. I mean, I even noticed, I was reading all the comments from the oversight committee, and they would say, and a lot of them were close votes, five to four. These were not all, you know, seven or nine to zero. And the comment was, well, this isn't in line with measure N, whatever. But it didn't ever say, in the notes I read, oh, this was, that particular improvement was all funded with ARPA money, or that was all out of our pocket. Well, there's no, I don't have any perspective on the people saying, hey, will unanimously approve this, or five to four approved it, without knowing, well, how much of that was coming out of our pocket? How much is free? So even reading that, I, I didn't know, did they approve it because it was free? Did they approve it because, or disagree because it came out of our pocket? So those, that, it was a nice summary reading, but I'm really confused how much is our money versus the grants at this point, when I see these, these big numbers. Okay? So help us out there. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Go to Councilmember Smith, and then back to Councilmember Corr.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just, as chairman of Kern Cog, I will say, you know, Chester Avenue, H Street, got ATP grants, got CMAC grants, we got substantial grant money on, on those projects. And I would also add that saving lives is what it's about. The city of Bakersfield always ranks high on how many people we kill violent deaths on our streets. And to continue to design them the same way makes no sense. So to change the way we design them and make them safer is our responsibility to our constituents. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. A few comments tonight. First and foremost, thank you to all of the community members who came out to be present tonight for this particular hearing, and for lifting up your concerns regarding the eviction prevention program, and also just homelessness prevention in general. Obviously, this is a pressing issue regarding housing in our community, and regarding homelessness and the continued increase. And it's something that this city and this county and this state is, continues to grapple with. And we look for various different strategies in order to, to respond. So I, I appreciate that. I appreciate Councilmember Adias's referral, and look forward to having that conversation as we move forward. I do want to note, because there was a conversation or a comment made about Affordable Housing Trust Fund. That is something that we established thanks to the Public Safety and Vital Services Initiative. We're currently budgeting, correct me if I'm wrong, $3 million in PSVS this current year. But I do also want to note that we have allocated $9 million for affordable housing, and that is going to our community land trust, where we will be constructing new housing for, for our community. And then I think the, the larger point is that we can't build enough affordable housing. We can't build it cheap enough, we can't build it fast enough. And so the, the broader conversation really has to be about reform in terms of how we improve our processes so we can allow for more housing development, period, in this community. That's how we, I think, the only hope we have to really get ourselves out of this housing crisis. And so I, I think that needs to be at the forefront as well in any of these conversations. There's a lot of, there's a lot of conversation tonight about safe streets. I, I agree with Councilmember Smith, full heartedly, this is about saving lives. We just had a walk with residents in East Bakersfield along Niles of Monterey. I was with my constituents, and those individuals in my community are saying that we want safer streets for those who walk to school, those who walk to work, those who ride bicycles in the neighborhood, which are many. And we've had far too many pedestrian fatalities over the last four years, far too many. It, it is, frankly, it's embarrassing as a city that we've had so many pedestrian deaths. When you look at other communities throughout the country who are able to reduce them and get to zero pedestrian deaths, when we realize that it's actually possible. And so I would, I, I think we all need to pull together and figure out some solutions. I would love to hear alternative solutions to how we reduce the number of pedestrian fatalities within our community. So I, I think, finally, you know, the, this conversation really tonight is about the city's fiscal year budget for 2024-25, which includes our general fund, and includes PSVS. I think the, the ARPA conversation is really important to make, and I, Councilmember Freeman actually underscores a really important point, in that those dollars are going very quickly, and soon they will be gone. And so it's really important for us to be very strategic into how we allocate those one-time dollars in the future. Because my concern isn't for this particular fiscal year, but in this year, we've seen that our discretionary spending, the amount of money we actually have to, to actually move around in our budget, has shrunk considerably from last fiscal year. We have far less room. I think it's around $20 million. That, that's, that's a concern. Because as you look towards '25, '26, '26, '27, it's, it's dire. It's, it's very scary to look at that. And I've been on this council when we've had to make cuts, when we've had very tough fiscal years. I've been on the school board when we had to make very tough decisions, and we're not adding, we're cutting. And those are very, very hard, hard times. And so that's what I hope that we can avoid in this, in this upcoming budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Gray, was that a request to speak or an accident?
No.
Oh, okay. And yours was an accident? Okay. Councilmember Gray.
All right, thank you. I want to continue on this path about pedestrian deaths. It is very, very unfortunate, the amount of pedestrian and cyclist deaths that we have had in the city of Bakersfield. But I want to remind my council members and, and the public, a year ago, I sent an email to our police chief asking him to send me the numbers for 2022 and '23 of the deaths and what the circumstances were behind those deaths. Again, any death, any person that we lose is unfortunate. Their, their mothers, fathers, brothers, sisters, aunts, uncles. So I'm not taking that lightly. But I want to remind you of the statistics. In 2023, at the time that I asked the chief of police, every one of those people that died, it was because they were at fault. I myself have almost hit three cyclists since I've served on the city council, to where they actually stepped out in front of me, or where they're riding their bike in the wrong direction, right towards a car. So if we're going to talk about this, let's get our facts straight, that most of those people died because of their fault. Now, when we talk about the east side, this was something that I meant to bring up earlier, under reliable infrastructure. Right under the $49 million for complete streets, we're only allocating 2.6 million for street, curb, gutter, sidewalk improvements, and CBD, CDBG eligible neighborhoods. Why do we only have 2.6 million? You're just talking about the east side, where they can't walk to school, that it's safe, because there's not sidewalks. So why aren't we taking some of this 49 million on complete streets with all the green paint and narrowing the lines, or the lanes? Why don't we take some of that money? I would love to see that happen. I would love to see the east side receive the money for curbs, gutters, and sidewalks. To me, that's a much better investment than the green paint everywhere all over our city that, in spite of the meeting you had, there's a lot of people that aren't happy about it. So I'm glad you brought that up, Councilmember Gonzalez, about the, about the sidewalks and curb and gutters, because I forgot to mention that. That's where I would like to see more dollars going.
I'm glad to hear that, Councilmember Gray, because complete streets actually includes enhancements to sidewalks. And it includes often the building of additional street enhancements for pedestrians. It's not just about green paint. It's actually about additional street lighting in some circumstances. It's about additional trees to, to improve the shade canopy. So it's, it's far more comprehensive. When we're talking about streets, we're really talking about the opportunity for lots of different people to travel along that street, not just vehicles, but pedestrians as well. So it does include the sidewalks.
Then why in this, why in this budget, in these neighborhoods that need it the most, why do we have this little bitty bit of money allocated when we have this huge amount of money elsewhere? Like Buena Vista Street, that's a very nice neighborhood out there. Why make that kind of investment when the east side of town is where it's really needing, where they're needing the help?
Yeah, I can, Councilmember, I can address that. So I think it's more calling out the amount of CBG funds that we receive from the federal government. And what we do with those CBG funds is we invest them in curb, gutter, and sidewalk and street improvements. So it's just calling out that we receive 2.6 million in CBG funds, and that's how we invest them. So along with what Vice Mayor was saying, on, on many of these complete streets, we do also do side, we're just not calling out the sidewalk and other improvements with those complete streets. So it's, it's both that's occurring. Right. And, and some ARPA funds for some sidewalk enhancements as well. And some ARPA funds for some sidewalk enhancements as well. Yeah, $5.5 million.
I am pro-taking care of those parts of the city that need it the worst first. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Smith.
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to the Buena Vista comment. That's, we signed that contract last time, and I think it's $3.1, $3.2 million. And as I stated, then 2% of that went to the green paint. It was really the, you know, it's $3 million for new paving because it's an old street. It had nothing to do with spending $3 million on green paint. It was $3 million on new pavement. And while we're doing that, then we spend 2% of that on green paint. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Anyone else? Councilmember Corr.
Gary, if you could share the, we actually at our Multimodal and Traffic Safety Subcommittee yesterday, our consultants prepared excellent maps, heat maps, actually, that show where pedestrian deaths, accidents, cyclist accidents have happened. If we could email a copy to each of the council members, I think that would be very helpful. You'll see that it isn't just East Bakersfield, that isn't just downtown, it isn't just kind of where we're expecting them to happen, they are happening on these very wide roadways like Buena Vista, like Panama, actually, from East Panama all the way down. Panama is the second busiest roadway in our city, and that's by a lot of different measures. It's also one of the measures that restaurants use as to where to bring their new food spots, as to see where traffic is flowing, but those kind of function as freeways in a way. So that is evidence-based, and you'll see the heat map really just indicates exactly where, and it's color-coordinated, it's easy to follow, you'll see where the highest density is, it's red, orange, yellow. So I think everyone could benefit from reading that. Wow, I think I had my request way earlier, so there's a lot of different topics that we've talked about. But I am encouraged by the commitment to seeing improved infrastructure like sidewalks. We also discussed at our subcommittee meeting yesterday, different ways in which to create barriers between the car roadway and the sidewalk, and that being simple solutions like landscaping, separating those. But this is a larger trend, and I think it's for the good of the public to also share that, lots of times when you blame a pedestrian, or you blame a cyclist, this is not unique to just the city of Bakersfield. It's just how data is captured. So while that data might come from our police department, and that's how it is captured and documented, a lot of the times, it's actually, it needs to be a little bit more holistic in how it's studied. What is the existing infrastructure? What were the kind of circumstances that caused that accident to happen? I myself have come across probably three accidents within my own ward where a car was, a car had hit a pedestrian. I just happened to be passing by. Two of them were on Panama Lane, and I made the 911 call myself. And I can say that the pedestrian was not at fault, just from my own assessment of having to translate for some of these elderly folks. And how can we really place blame on someone who's just trying to be active in the morning, and don't anticipate being hit by a car, when just by physics, you can see that a car has a lot more autonomy? But this is a trend that's changing, and I'm encouraged to see that. We've had conversations, and I know Councilmember Smith has brought this up before too, is even how our press releases go out from our police department as to how pedestrian or cyclist accidents are documented and shared out to media. It matters because language matters, and I don't think we want to get into the habit of particularly blaming one party or another. It really is just where we can make those different improvements, but this is the step in the right direction. I wanted to follow up also on our conversation about affordable housing, our different kind of investments we've made. I think it would be beneficial for the good of the public if we could describe what a Community Land Trust is, if Councilmember Gonzalez, if you could share what we're doing with that, and where those investments are going.
So thank you for the question, Councilmember Corr. The city has established a nonprofit entity that's charged with the development of new housing units. And there will be, there's a strategy that is developing. We currently have a consultant that we are working with to develop our strategy. But one of the primary focuses is actually to develop a homeownership model, so that with some of the properties that the city currently owns, these vacant parcels, these vacant parcels will ultimately be utilized to build single-family homes. These single-family homes then will be sold to first-time homebuyers with the opportunity to build generational wealth. The land underneath the home will be leased to the homebuyer for up to 99 years. And so this is a model that's been established in lots of different places throughout the community, or throughout the country, rather. And it shows a lot of promise for us to not only add inventory for more affordable units, but also helping us identify strategies to move people into the middle class, helping them build wealth through homeownership. In addition to that, we are looking at some potential rental units, so that we can provide some affordable housing directly to our community, and working with community partners to actually run those facilities, so that we can accelerate the construction and the availability of new affordable housing units in our community.
Thank you. So the way in which ARPA dollars are, they kind of limit to CDBG districts. And so for those who could benefit from learning about this as well, there's certain, you can look up a map, where there are certain CDBG districts within the city, and the ARPA dollars, ARPA being an acronym for different federal funding that's come down to the city, are utilized in certain disadvantaged communities, and are limited to those. Would this Community Land Trust, is there a limitation as to which parts of town that Community Land Trust could be established, and/or where these rentals could be obtained?
Mr. Allen?
I could answer it. And I think Jenny is here too, she's ready to answer as well. So I think the short end, as we utilize ARPA funds, we do want to focus in on those qualifying census tracts for the American Rescue Plan. And some of the sites that we're prioritizing currently are those properties that we actually own. The city actually has identified, has actually, it's part of our, part of our current inventory. So those will be priority one. And actually, my estimate is that those properties will probably, are probably more than enough to expend the dollars that we have available through ARPA. But long-term, if this council, and I hope we do, allocates additional dollars, either through Public Safety and Vital Services, or through Bradley Burnt, we can actually expand the land trust scope beyond those qualifying census tracts. So we can actually work in lots of different parts of the city. And my hope is that eventually, this Community Land Trust will actually serve the entire city.
That's great to know. I was having a conversation with one of the advocates here, and a couple of other constituents, in kind of anticipation of today's council meeting, who shared that while it is encouraging for these efforts to kind of support where someone is already residing, you know, these are still kind of our most disadvantaged neighborhoods, and in order for folks to feel an opportunity, an opportunity for mobility, it is also being able to live in other parts of the city that they dream of living in, and having mobility to live there, and it might not be in the neighborhood that they're in right now. So how do we also encourage that through some of these investments that we're making at the city? I think it kind of makes way for others to cycle through as well. So my ask is that whether it's the eviction protection program, or it's our Community Land Trust, I'd like for us to also come up with solutions to keep families, you know, whether they're in South Bakersfield, and that's where they want to stay. How do we also include non-CDBG districts while also encouraging some of our residents to be able to seek residency in some of those areas, or stay in those areas? They may not qualify based on the boundaries, the arbitrary boundaries that might be drawn, but if there's opportunity for them to stay in their homes, or purchase a home, or for us to create a Community Land Trust in a neighborhood that, you know, I guess in simple terms, you know, everyone wants to live in the nicer parts of town as well. And so the opportunity should exist for all residents to have access to that, and to access those schools, and to have upward mobility. And I hope we can build that in with both of these efforts, and that also be a priority for us at the city council.
I don't see any other requests to speak. Can we have a motion to accept all comments, please?
Motion to accept all comments.
You have a motion, please catch your votes.
Motion is approved, with Councilmember Weir voting no.
Thank you. And now, next item, please.
Council and mayor's statements.
Madam Clerk, do you need to do something? Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Colleagues, on June 2nd, 10 days ago, a historic structure, a significant building in downtown Bakersfield caught fire and burned down the Great American Antique Building at 625 19th Street, at 19th and R. The firefighters, Bakersfield firefighters, did a tremendous job. They were on scene right away, as soon as they got their, the call. Station one was out there, trying to put out the fire. They were trying to contain it as best as they could before it spread, but unfortunately, the fire just, there was a lot of fuel, and the fire spread and got away from them. But they were out there for several hours. I actually witnessed it. I was there until well past 1:00 a.m., witnessing their heroic efforts. And so I want to thank the Fire Department for all of their work. And Chief, thank you for your communications thereafter. But I think it continues to underscore this underlying issue that we have with vacant structures, particularly in downtown and in the urban core. We have adopted a vacant structure ordinance, which I think is helpful, but I think we need to take a look at improving and enhancing that vacant structure ordinance, and adding additional requirements for those structures that are owned and remain vacant long-term. Number one, this particular building had no insurance on it.
And so I think one of the pieces that we need to look at is requiring insurance on properties that remain vacant and are part of our downtown or urban core. The other piece, which I had hoped would have been included in the original ordinance, is requiring, is required some sort of fire suppression, or end-fire detection system for these vacant structures. And doing just a little bit of research, I found that the National Fire Protection Agency, which actually informs a lot of our code, when I understand from the Fire Department, really outlines eight components for life safety, for life safety ecosystem. And they're actually recommend that when it comes to vacant buildings, that cities adopt ordinance is that really address several things. Number one is restricted access, which I think our ordinance does, ensuring that the buildings are appropriately locked and secured. Number two is limiting the fill load, so really requiring vacant buildings, to be clear, all combustible storage, waste, refuse, and vegetation. That includes dumpsters. And, but number three is really to maintain fire protection systems. And I thought that this statement in one of their memos was really poignant. It states that if the building has a sprinkler system, the fire may be extinguished even though the building is empty. Or if there is a fire alarm system, the fire department may be notified sooner than if the system has been disabled. And speaking with the chief, even if there's just one sprinkler in a building, it could actually do quite a bit to suppress that fire. And so I really feel strongly, given the fact that this fire was devastating for a historic building, a really important block in downtown Bakersfield, across from the Museum of Art, and also how devastating it could have been, should the winds have picked up, and that fire could have spread to nearby buildings. We would have had a major disaster in downtown Bakersfield and in Bakersfield. So I'd like to make this a call, and I'd like to send it back to Planning Development for additional review of these enhancements to the ordinance. Also like us to look at the dumpster, metal lid, and lock program. Our Solid Waste Department has done a tremendous job, great job, in going through downtown systematically, installing metal lids, installing locks, I think that's wonderful. But I think that we also need to adopt an ordinance requiring metal lids and locks in our urban core, so that, again, we can prevent a lot of these attractive nuisances. Thank you also much. I have a few more proposals, but I'll wait till I can say anything. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor.
I just had one referral. I had a gentleman last week in his tenant property, commercial property, and they, co-enforcement's been citing them for feather signs. And Mr. Roy tried to work some options for them, but they believe that the feather signs are all in town, and they should be able to have them. Anyway, I would like to refer to Planning Development, that we look at sign ordinance, and maybe we're in the right spot, or maybe we need to change it. So we can have Planning Development assign them. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see other requests to speak. Tonight, I'll be adjourning the meeting in tribute to former Councilmember Rowley Moore, who served from 1983 to 1987 as the Ward Five Councilmember. During his service today, he was described as an encourager, one who loved people, compassionate, a friend to all, available to others, and strong in faith. And so tonight, we stand adjourned at 7:53 in memory of Councilmember Rowley Moore.